Now, just after seven o'clock, we have a quorum. I do want to pass on regrets from councillor Membercat. She let us know yesterday she had an unavoidable conflict. And so I want to welcome everybody to this month's meeting of the whole, sorry, committee of the whole meeting. Just a reminder, we're being recorded and you can watch this on our live stream or you can watch it on our YouTube channel. You can also watch it on Tellil for the next week or so. I'll begin by acknowledging that we are gathered here today in Unmoggi, the land of the fog, a part of Migmagi, the unceded, traditional territory of the Migma people since time immemorial. We honor and thank the Migma for sharing their land and home with us. So you have the agenda in front of you that was circulated last week. Any errors or omissions or any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as circulated. Moved by councillor Sampson to adopt the agenda as circulated. Can I have a secondary?
I'll second that.
Any question, debate, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to accept the agenda as circulated, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried. You have on, in pages four to nine of your package, if you're following along online, then the, is the agenda for the review, sorry, is the review of the minutes from the last committee of the whole meeting, that was on January 14th. I'll ask if there are any errors or omissions in those minutes. Anybody wants to flag? I hear none. So I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as circulated.
I'm moved to approve them.
Moved that we adopt the January 14th, 2025 meetings as circulated by deputy warden Sampson. Can I have a secondary? Since our policy says that someone who wasn't at the meeting cannot.
Sean can't vote on this.
He can vote, but he can't move or second. Yep. Oh, look, yes.
I'll second.
Thank you so much. Seconded by councillor Marshawn that the minute meetings be adopted as circulated. And just for people who are listening, the council's procedural policies say that you have to be at the meeting in order to be able to move or second the adoption of those minutes. So, any question on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the January 14th, 2025 meetings as circulated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is carried. So we have two presentations to council this evening. And, and a note for those of you following along in your package, apologies, they're out of sequence, the, the reports are out of sequence. So we're actually going to begin with a presentation that if you are following along, it's page 34 to 232 of your package. So quite thorough, lots of information in there for folks to digest. So I'll welcome Christopher Bowie from Architecture 49, who will speak to us about the multi-use feasibility, facility feasibility study.
Well, thank you for having me. We, so I'm an architect from A49 in Halifax. About a little, I guess, close to two years ago now, we, we began this multi-use center feasibility study with, with the municipality and we also employed a group of experts to assist us in this pursuit. I'm an architect, so I did the design of the actual facility. We employed WSP, both their planning and their environmental sciences, I guess, or environmental engineer, engineering side of things to do both the engagement portion of the work and the energy modeling portion of the work. And then we also employed Newstadia Recreation, who's a operations specialist. Basically, they operate facilities that are, that are quite a lot like this facility that we designed. And then we also employed Altis Limited, who's a cost consultant to do the overall hard costs for the building, so what the building would cost to build. So this is just an overview of, of the report, that it actually is quite a lot longer than this, but these are just the highlights from the report that I'm going to walk you through right now. So I'll begin doing that. So just as an introduction, what we did was a needs assessment portion, which would be phase one, and then phase two was the concept design and then the business and operational plan. The needs assessment, there was a variety of engagement meetings we, we did with, with the council and then with, we did some Migma community outreach, staff interviews and some stakeholder meetings. I did a walkthrough of all the facilities in the area. It was interesting, there's, there's a variety of different community centers and gymnasiums, schools that I went to. And then from, from the engagement sessions, we put together a what we heard document and then also a needs assessment with recommendations associated with that needs assessment. Basically, what kind of, figuring out what programs would be incorporated into the, into the project. And then also, yeah, and then from there, oh, and then also we looked at different sites from around the area and evaluated strengths and weaknesses of those sites, trying to find a good place to put the facility. And then from there, we took the information that we gained and developed a functional program and designed a really high level design for the, the, the different, we, we made a, basically designed a building around the, the needs assessment in the what we heard document. And then from there, we got a cost, a class D cost estimate done. We did an energy model to see what the best, what, what the best mechanical operations, what, what kind of mechanical systems we should use to heat, heat and cool the building. And then, and then we did the operations costs, so how much it would cost to run the building over, I guess, a 30-year period. And then afterwards, we came back after the community saw the design and we had another engagement session that evaluated that design. And we, we heard what you guys thought of it. So this is an outline of, of what we heard the first, during the first engagement process. So that was, it was basically just information gathering. We had three open houses and an online survey as well that we went through. Summary of what we, this is kind of a summary of the key themes that we heard from that online survey and also all those engagement sessions. The first was to be complimentary to the area, so not, to not promote any programs that would compete with businesses that are already entrenched in the area. And for example, you'll see as we go forward, there was the thought of possibly putting a weight training facility within the facility, but we understand after, after our review of the community and the needs assessment, that there already is a, a weight training gym in the, in the community that is not at capacity, so we, we left that out of the program. There was a priority to have a central location within the, within the community. It's, it's a large, geographically, it's quite a large place and we wanted to make sure that the, that the building would be located central to the, central to the area There was the option, optionality for space intensive uses, so that, that being basically trying to, to provide as many multi-use functional spaces as we possibly could for the, for the facility, so that many different programs could be run within, within it. And then also inclusivity to everyone in a universal design sense to try and promote participation across all age groups and allowing to kind of provide programming for the community that currently it lacks. So from the community survey, we had a really good response. In the three open houses, there were three, oh, I'm, I'm taking information from the, when we came, when we returned. Basically, this, this, this is basically a sheet that breaks down what we heard from the, from our engagement sessions, kind of an, a, a summary of the different programs that were promoted, or were noted as, as needed within the, within the community for the, for the, for the facility. So from that, I took, we took that information and then we decided, we designed a program based on, on the information that we gathered from those engagement sessions. But first, we had a, had a look at the, the overall, the, the overall municipality and, and had a look at different places within the, within the facility, or the municipality that would be good for putting this, putting this facility. It was, it was a difficult exercise because there really wasn't a lot of areas that the municipality currently owns. Whiteside Road was only, was the only area that was currently owned by the municipality. But we did look at four different sites geographically and each one kind of in one location within the, within the community. But, but the one that was the most central was the one that scored highest, which is actually adjacent to the current, to the current arena. So basically, from the site evaluation metric, matrix, the centrality of, of the, of the location had the highest, was given the highest weighting and was, and in the end, it, the most central location was adjacent to the current arena, so that was the one that was the most successful. We're getting into concept design drawings, which is what I'm actually quite knowledgeable about, and this is what I do for a living. So just to give you an overall idea of what the building ended up looking like, taking the, the what we heard document and the needs assessment, making a program, and then basically building a, a, a design around that program. So this is an idea of the site plan. You can see the existing arena right adjacent to the multi-use building. Very high level, we're, if, if, this is sort of a hypothetical location and if, if it was to be on the site, this is how it would, could, could be located. So on the first level, gymnasium gestures out towards the front of the building with views into the gymnasium from when you enter. There's a large change room at the rear of the gymnasium, universal, so that any, like each one of these is an enclosed changing facility for, so that anybody can use them. Two universal washrooms that could incorporate a shower if necessary, a large storage room off the gymnasium as well. There's a large lobby space that has Claire Storey windows at the, up high to bring light deep into the building, kind of thinking that this is, is sort of the living room for the community. There's a concession for food service that could be used for monetary, like to, to basically gain some revenue for the facility. Also an open office space located here for, also for revenue purposes. They could be rented out to, to a business or possibly for single use rentals if, if people working from home wanted to kind of get out of the, out of their house and go to an open office work environment. There's a multi-use performance space that has a divide, divisible wall, so that this, this space could function as two, two different spaces or it could be opened up and become one large performance space with the idea of a stage, a removable stage that could be stored on, on this, in these storage areas. There's a large NHL-sized ice pad, six change rooms, there's a change room located at the front, an extra one for figure skating and then officials changing and then obviously the support sta, support spaces for the arena. That's the first floor. On the second floor, there's a walking track, two large kind of, one, one's titled the hospitality room and then an executive boardroom. This also has, can be split off with the operable wall. The hospitality room has a kitchenette, just in case there's a banquet or, or something like that where there's food service necessary. There could be a, a fridge located there as well. And then obviously the walking track. The walking track's nice because it's got some views down into the, into the lobby space and then windows to look into the, into the parking lot in front. This is what it looks like in 3D, kind of not the most exciting images, but luckily we've got renderings to look at, just kind of giving me an idea of what the building looks like as far as massing goes. And then that's what it would look like. Obviously very high level, but giving an idea of what this could be.
Of course, you've got four minutes.
Okay. Okay, I'll speed up. Operations, and this is good because I didn't do the operations stuff.
Exactly, just a 55 points, that's all.
Okay, so.
I'll stress you out.
Yeah. That's all right.
There's no book, Mike.
Just as far as operations goes, very high level. So basically, to sum this up, the, the building will not, there, there are revenue sources, ice rentals, gymnasium rentals, multi-use room rentals, food and beverage, et cetera, et cetera. However, the building will not break even. Just overall metrics over here, it stands to lose between $535,000 and $735,000 per year, which is comparable basically to what Port Hoxbury's multi-use center currently is, is losing. So it would be a very similar kind of idea. That, that being said, there's lots of intangible benefits that come from it. There's community impact, increased active lifestyle, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it's kind of like you'll gain a, a bunch, but there will be this economic, economic loss. The economic impact assessment, basically there, to summarize, there's job creation that will happen because of this. 200, 250 temporary jobs will be created because of this. And then over 30 years, just because of sport tourism, et cetera, et cetera, you do have the, the capacity to make up to, I think, 15.7 million dollars over the, over that 30-year period. So that's, there, there is some, there will be benefits definitely from doing this. The cost estimate.
I'd like it if we could just go by.
Yeah. So to build the building, we're looking at $43 million, or, or, yeah, $43 million, a little over that. So it's around $588 a square foot, which is, which is what we're seeing across the board nationally for a building such as this. So there, that's the cost estimate. And then we did an energy report, WSP, the energy modeler, basically, he, he created a, a standard model based on like the, just energy code, just meeting the energy code. And then we created two other models to compare. Variant one used a heat recovery system that used fossil fuels and variant two was completely electric. And WSP suggests using the electric version because it will both cost less and in the end, there'll be less, less pollutants and in the end, we're future-proofing because that's the way Nova Scotia is moving anyway. And then we came back, so basically, it looks like that got cut off. Oh, no, okay. So we came back and from, we had another round of engagement. It was very well attended. People were excited to see the, the design and we had three open houses and an online option. 312 people responded to the open houses and there were 300 responses to the online survey. The most liked about the facility was, we heard was the walking track and it was accessible for everyone. And then what was missing, they had a lot of comments about having no pool and they thought that the outdoor space should be more developed, which was out, out of our scope, but definitely you would want to look at developing the outdoor spaces and incorporating a variety of basketball courts, et cetera, if you went forward with this. The overall concerns that were highlighted were the cost of the building and the tax impacts that would be felt by the people. They wanted to make sure that the concession or canteen had healthy eating and they wanted, were hoping that it could be possibly used by the community. And then that's basically where, a quick summary of, of what we did. And this, this study will be available and it's a lot longer, I think it's 150 pages rather than the 29 I just showed you.
Thank, thank you. And, and the, the full report is actually already on our meeting package, but we'll, we're, we're going to speak to it being a, an adopted report so that it can just be more easily found on the website. But I, I want to thank you for that presentation. I, I do want to remind folks or just let folks know that we, we had a little bit longer version of this where the presenter, along with a couple of other folks who were able to speak in more detail about costs and energy and that kind of thing. That, that meeting is available on our website. So if you're watching this and you want to go to the same place that you found this meeting, you can find that one, which is just a little more detail. So I, mindful of time, I'm wondering if councillors are okay with a question each? It, it took us about 15 minutes to get through that earlier. So is it okay if we just go in numerically? So I see your finger on the button, so can we?
Sort of want to.
You had your finger on the button. I, no, did you mean, yeah. So we'll start with deputy warden Sampson, go ahead.
Hey. No, thank you for that. One of the things I was wondering about, just I know we had talked earlier about, you know, possibly that the cost difference thing on whether it be just an arena and a walking track, but there were some other notes in there about seating style, when, when the seating style is more geared to one side, they, they just had notes saying it can significantly impact the cost, but I didn't know by how much or like, I'm looking for an exact number, but like what, what do you find that, how do you find that impact it rather than having seating all four sides?
Well, so the one, you're going to have more challenges having a walking track if you're going to have seating only on the one side because, because you're, you just, you need, if you want to have a walking track that goes all the way around, you need the, the area for that walking track to function on the opposing side of the ice. So I think if a walking track is important to the facility, there, there is positives to having the seating on the other side. If you do get rid of that seating, then your steel length is shorter, so you're just going to spend a lot less on the overall amount of steel that's there. And then you, and then I guess likely if you're going to go up to 1,000 seats, however, you probably want to do both sides.
Quick follow-up. Would the, would the walking track, would that kind of thing be possible? Because like, say you might have, I'm thinking of the existing arena now where the benches are on the opposite side, you may have some space to have some kind of a cantilevered walking track above there still.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
It would be as wide.
Yeah.
But yeah, you could probably do it.
No, thank you for that, that, that's a.
Typically the walk, when you do see a walking track that goes around the ice surface, you typically have seating on both sides. I've seen it. That's the only way we've ever done it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that. Councillor for District Three, we're going in reverse.
Thank you, warden. Chris, you were involved in writing this, were you?
Yeah.
One thing that struck me is your comment, the county of Richmond's current arena is at end of life, and you stated that a couple of times. I don't know if you're referring to the 2019 study because you spoke of that as well, that speaks of the building and this FCI issue. What's your thoughts on that FCI, on the number that they put there?
I think it's low now because it's, it was done quite a long time ago, that, that assessment. I think costs have gone up considerably since that assessment.
So you're saying the 60% is low?
I think.
So you're saying.
You think it's over $20 million to, to repair this building?
Your building now?
Yeah.
No, I don't think it'll cost $20 million. Well. I don't, I don't know. To replace the buil, I don't, I don't think it'll cost, I, it's hard for me to know. You'd have to, we'd have to do that again. We'd have to get that updated, that report.
So where do you come up with the building is at end of life?
The report basically says that a variety of, a variety of your systems need to be replaced.
Okay, and you do, you do reference that in your document and you state them as needing immediate replacement and you list a whole slew of items.
Yeah, that's just from, directly from the report that I reviewed.
Okay.
And then most of those had a date associated with when the replacement was necessary.
And some was many, many years. But these are immediates as per the document that was done in 2019.
Yeah.
I don't believe in speaking to our public works that any of these things have been done yet.
I think some have.
And we have been, we have been running this building since 2019.
Right.
So if these are immediates as of 2019, you know, one that's, that's been there, I've been on this, I was on the board when it was a volunteer board. And this inslab piping needed, needing immediate replacement, that's been an issue for eons. You know, there's been issues and maybe our public works director, they've been doing repairs. I mean, that's something to me that needs to be done, you know? And in light of, you know, our warden has stated that we don't want this building to go, you know, to just collapse on us. I think that's something that needs to be done as quick as possible, you know?
I think that's the only scope of what our presenter can, can speak to. Yeah.
But you are listing that these are immediates.
You are listing that the building is at end of life and I disagree with that, that it's at end of life. That's my comments. One more comment is, I noticed that you spoke of a bunch of halls and things like that. There's a hall in my community, there's two of them there, there's a lines hall and the parish hall, and we use the parish hall for walking. I didn't see anything in this document about that. So maybe it wasn't brought to your attention, but.
I'd have to go back and see if I went to the parish hall. I'm not sure if I did or not.
I didn't see it listed and, and we do walk, it's open in the winter between.
Ten and two for people to go walking. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. So five, four, three, two, that's me. So can you, I just want to be clear on, because I wasn't part of last council, essentially, does this end your relationship with the municipality in terms of the work that you were hired to do? Is this, this sort of brings that to a close, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm, I'm curious as to whether you made, are there any changes in this report that you submitted to us for tonight that stemmed from the conversations you had in the last three meetings, so Scratch Eats and, so, so that's information for us to take as we move forward in the process. So you, so again, the reason, just an example, I remember there was a conversation about solar, so that's not reflected. So the, we should be mindful of the fact that the consultations that took place at Scratch Eats, at the Luzdale Arena, at the Eatery in St. Peters and online, that's information essentially for us. You didn't make any changes to the, okay, yeah, I just.
I didn't make any.
Yep, no, no, it's just, just as we move forward with ongoing discussions and considerations, just so that we're, we're mindful that that is more information that may not have been reflected in your report, but that would be left to us.
Yeah, and if you, the next, the next consultants you hire, they can take that information and, you know, build, build this, the, the idea is to just keep building this until you actually build the project, so. And if, if it is the next, if the next thing is building something like this or building this, you can take that information and, and use it.
Thank you. So coming up in last place, District One.
Thank you, warden. Yeah, so just, I.
Yeah, so just, I brought this up earlier, Chris, thanks for all your work on this, but I brought this up earlier, on page 21 it states space for, for youth programming, right? So encourage youth programming, right? But when I look at the survey that was done online, we're looking at over 400 people that took the survey, and when you look at the breakdown of ages, you know, 40 to 64 was 53%, 28, 39 was 25%, so that's a total of 78%. 65 and over was 21%. And what really sticks out to me is that 19 and under was only 1%. So for me, like, it's, it's saying we should encourage youth programming, but there's only 1% of the population that was youth that took the survey, right? So, you know, looking, looking into the future, you know, for us as well, you know, my, my, my take on the whole situation when it comes to engagement is that, you know, if, if they're not going to come to you, then maybe we go to them, right? So, you know, going, going to elementary schools, going to high schools, you know, and, and having these kinds of seminars in front of 200 students, right? And then let them see what, what they say and, you know, what their take is on a situation like this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, food for thought, I guess, right?
For sure. Yeah, I think there would be definite benefits to doing that.
Yeah. And just one more, one more word, if, if I may. We speak of open office concepts, so people, you know, looking for a different environment, you know, just get out of the house more or less and go and just, you know, do their work in a different atmosphere, a different environment. Is that the norm that you see or would something like long-term rentals for revenue, income, you know, long-term revenue, would that be an option? Like, you know, you're looking at maybe local employees that work for a law firm or an accounting firm or whatever that would rent these spaces year-round and it would become, you know, revenue all year long, right?
Yeah, I, I think it's, just depends on how you guys want to move forward with that. I'm not sure what the metrics are as far as people working from home in this area. I know in Halifax, I have a significant amount of friends that work basically from home and they, they actually rent an office, a space and, and basically, it's, it's just an open office where people go and work and you, you pay a certain amount a month to do that. That might be a nice option for you guys, but I don't know, I'm not sure, I, I, I guess you'd have to look at if there, if there is, if it's, it's been a success, if you've done this before in the community and if it's been successful, then, and, and you've had a permanent office rental space work, then maybe that would be a good idea here. But it, it is an option to generate revenue there, for sure. Sure.
Great, thank you. I, I want to say thank you very much for, for your time with us and for the work that you've put into this project. Certainly, you know, we're, as a council, as a municipality, as a council, we're nowhere near the end of any conversations about what could or could not be and what might cost and, and all of that. But this is a really good opportunity for us to start those conversations and, and it, it is interesting to me, I, I did have somebody who, you know, was like, I can't wait to go to that, those, those presentations and I, and it was like, add more and why not a pool and, and add this and add that? And then the, the number came out and it was good of you to put the 43 million in big print, because then he called me and nearly had like a heart attack, no, no, we can't do anything. So it, those are, you know, it's just important information for us to ground our conversations. So thank you for, for your work on that. I will ask for council, looking for a motion to adopt the, to accept the multi-use facility feasibility study because we want to be able to basically take ownership of it and put it on our website so that it's something we can refer to. So I'm looking for a motion to accept the report so that it, it sort of belongs to us and has a place in our.
I'll make a motion, I like to make two of them, but I'll make a motion that we accept, so we are talking the larger document, we're accepting the larger document.
So the, the one that is currently available, it's on our website now, it's pages 34 to 232, but I'd, I'd like to see it moved to the document section of our website and not just embedded in, in this meeting. So, so it's been moved by Counselor Marshon that we adopt the multi-use facility feasibility study as presented. Can I have a second, or?
I'll second that.
Great. So we have a motion on the floor to, to recommend to council, I, I'm sorry, it should be recommend to council, to accept the multi-use facility feasibility study as presented. Any question on that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Warden, I'd like to make another motion in light of, of these documents, that we ask staff, there is some money for rehabilitating arenas, that we ask staff to maybe put an application in for that money. And, and the work that I think we need to do is this underfloor piping and that job, those jobs need to get done in the summer. So when the arena is done this year, look for money to get that done. A new facility is a long time away and if we're having issues with the refrigeration system and the underfloor piping, I think we need to seek out some money, put an application in as quick as possible, try to get that work done so that this facility doesn't end up, I mean, anything happening with that system can put the arena down. Not saying a new system wouldn't fail, but I'd like to make a motion that we ask staff to, or we recommend to council that, we ask staff that, to get an application in as quick as possible to get the underfloor piping system, concrete and refrigeration system looked at.
So there's a motion on, that, there's, there's been a motion put forward. So we have a couple paths, we can have a second or just for conversation, we can have a second or who's absolutely committed to that question or the, that sort of dies here. So I'm, I'm not able to second, so throw it out.
I'll second that and then whoever wants to start the conversation, but I had a couple of questions in regard to that.
So I want to make sure that I've read it properly. So we are recommending to council that staff put an application in for in-floor.
No, no, apply, I think there's some, some money through. See, and some through the rehabilitation for arenas or something. So I think we need to get something together because.
Yeah, I thought you had very specifically mentioned some things.
Oh yeah, the work to be done specifically is mainly the, the underfloor, I guess, the underice surface refrigeration system. I think, you know, our public works director could probably speak more to that, but that's, I think, the work that according to these documents is pretty important to be done.
Okay, so. And this may require a. An amendment to the motion, but to get us started, this is a recommendation to council to direct staff to put in an application, put in any necessary applications specifically around underice surface and piping. Did I, okay, so that's, that's what the, that's what the motion is and it's been seconded. So substitute for clerk, Danielle, you have that? Okay. So that's the motion on the floor. So now we're opening that up for debate. Do you have finger on the button, deputy?
So, and, and my only, okay, my, my only, my concern, I'm very much in favor of investigating this kind of thing, but I, I just kind of feel like the way it's worded, we're applying almost like as if we're just going forward without knowing what these costs are either. Like I'd just rather, I'd get your intent on this.
I guess the worry I have and deadlines can be altered, I guess, and speaking to our MLA, the deadlines for some of these grants are coming up within the weeks. So, you know, the fiscal year is ending, but it can be extended. It's just, I think this work needs to be done between April and September, so the sooner the better. I mean, if it's not this summer or this 25, then it has to be 26, but I think we need to move on this because this has been an issue for many years.
So I, I'd like to kind of throw my two cents in there. I, I have some concerns and here, here are my concerns. We have a building that has multiple issues identified in a report dated 2019. The 2019 report lists several things, not just this. So I'm concerned about the money that we might put out for one thing without acknowledging that there are other things that may happen to the arena in terms of challenges and I'm thinking about BDEC. So fixed something, fixed something else, something else went and that was kind of the final straw and they ended up closing after having spent money. I'm also concerned about pulling, doing work that might actually pull a building permit. So I'm specifically concerned about the part in the report that, like the report says, a detailed evaluation of the property development's compliance with national and provincial building codes and our fire codes is not part of the scope of the assessment with the exception of the structural assessment. So I am concerned that work that we do that is sizable in scope may very well require the pull of a buld- building permit that therefore requires the whole building to go up to see. So I, I'm, I'm urging caution about A, spending money on one thing when there are multiple things that may have to be done and B, unintended fixes we may have to make to build, to bring the building up to code. So I, you know, this is not exactly the same example, but I did renovations on, I put a basement under my house and I, when I made the first floor, I pulled the building permit and they told me I had to put new windows upstairs. I hadn't done any work upstairs. So I am very concerned about the fact that we, we have not had an assessment of any areas where we are short, where we, we fall short around national building codes, provincial codes and in particular, fire marshal regulations. So I am urging caution around that quick move forward in a matter of a couple of weeks and months. And maybe I'll ask the CAO to comment.
And Madam Chair, any of those grant applications are going to require matching funding or things like that and this would be unbudgeted at this point in time. There, there are no funds allocated for this in our current budget. Doesn't mean you guys can't make motions, but this is an unbudgeted item that we are discussing right now. So another reason to investigate as opposed to push forward at this point. Keeping in mind.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I would tend to agree with Counselor Marshon, but I also agree with you, CAO, that we should maybe investigate before we go too, too far here. But I think I understand Mr. Counselor Marshon's concerns here that over the last couple of years, we've had some delayed openings and I think it has to do with this refrigeration problem. And, you know, we've all said, Madam Warden, that we don't want to see Richmond County without an arena. So, you know, there's a fear there that, you know, this multi-use facility is, you know, we just spent two years with the consulting firm, so this is going to be a long process, right? So this building might be four or five years away. Are we going to keep going down this road for the next four or five years with this problem?
And maybe one day we end up with no arena?
You know, that's maybe a road we, we don't want to go down, right? So investigate, yeah, you know, should we act aggressively? Probably not, but I would investigate that situation and, and, and see, you know, if, if there is repairs that can be made to make sure that our current facility is maintained and, and lasts the four or five years that it's going to take to build a new one. I would, I would go down that road for sure.
So what I'm hearing is not, is, is not reflected in the motion that's currently on the floor. So I'm wondering if there is an appetite to amend the motion or vote on this one or, and, and move forward with a different one? Or what are, what are the wishes? Because what we're talking about here, investigate, is not consistent with the motion on the floor. Counselor Marshon?
Number one, to the budgeting issue, this would be after April the 1st, we would be budgeting in the future. Number two, I'm concerned if there are fire marshal issues with this building, we need to address those as well. If you are worried that there are issues with this building, because I thought it gets addressed or for this fire rating or, or the amount of people you can put, I thought those were annual inspections that were done. So if there's an issue, you think that is going to be brought up because of, if we have to bring, you know, get a building permit because we're doing repairs here, I think we need to address that as well. So if you're concerned, that would not stop me from voting for this, for sure.
Yeah, I, I am concerned about all of the things, including the roof, including all of the things. Right. And so I'm not suggesting we do nothing, I am suggesting we, we be cautious around the timeline that your motion on the floor here speaks to. So I'm happy to put this to a vote and then entertain an additional motion or like if there's, if nobody's bringing forth an amendment, then that's what happens next, we vote. Any other discussion on the motion or?
I'm just thinking in theory, we could bring out a whole new motion if this is defeated anyway, that maybe better reflects the intent of council. If, I mean, depending on the result of the vote, I guess, you know, yeah.
Yes, we are required to vote on something. Either we're voting on an amendment or we're voting on this, but there's no amendment on the floor. And once we vote on this, if it doesn't pass or if it does, we can make other motions. So I'll, I'll call for any further debate or amendments and if hearing, and, and I'll call for that amongst the councilors who are here.
I don't know if we're able to, but I mean, we can ask staff if, if they're willing to give any opinion. I, I just think it's something we need to look at, however we do it, we need to get moving on this because this new building is years away. And you made comments that you're worried about this one failing, we spoke of BDEC. I know in Andyganish, the town, I believe, they, they did repairs and, you know, to their underfloor piping and maybe, I believe you know some people there, but we could find out what they did, what their costs were, but I think we need to get to this. If, as Counselor Sampson says, there's delayed openings, refrigeration related, I know we've bought some free on because of our system being an old system, so we need to get on this regardless of building a new one or not. I think we need to get on this.
So the motion on the floor versus what I'm hearing around is make the application versus investigate. So the current motion on the floor is for staff to, to make applications. So I'm going to call for a vote on that motion and then open the floor should there be another motion someone would like to make that reflects the investigation of such, unless I hear different.
Going back to Counselor Marshon's point, can we ask our Director of Public Works if he has an opinion on this situation or some input or just?
I think we just heard from our municipal affairs staff that that's kind of not the, the appropriate procedure at, at meetings, right? To, to ask staff, to be fair, right? That, that municipal affairs spoke to us about the importance of giving staff an opportunity to respond in a written format to us. So we can certainly do that, but not on the spot tonight, right? And, and for people who are watching, we had a, a training session about, you know, best practices around the relationship between staff and, and council. And, and we want staff to feel confident in their, in what they tell us and we want them to be able to sit with that. So I, I think we, we heard it in a way that we hadn't maybe thought of it before and that that's, that really is best practice. So I, I'm, I'm all for consultation with staff and getting information from staff, just I'd like to follow those procedures.
Investigate first.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah. No, 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 yeah. Yep. No, no, no. Yeah.
Sorry. I think to be fair, we say these things because our staff is tremendous. And we know that they could answer a lot of these questions.
Well, it's on, our staff is tremendous and we know that they are very knowledgeable. But I think we are trying in our council procedures, in our multiple opportunities to meet with municipal affairs and exercise best practices. I think we want to be consistent on that. So it's a compliment to our staff if we are thinking about these folks would know because they probably do, but we want to do that in a way that's appropriate. So again, we have a motion on the floor which is specifically to, and it's an action. It is a direct staff to make applications.
I'm just kind of thinking of this and, I mean, should we, you know, there, hopefully there's time with these grants, but we do need to move quick. So unless I make an amendment and just put the word investigate before the application. So I'll move an amendment just that we have staff investigate and apply, you know, as soon as possible. Because I guess even for the application, they're going to have to do some kind of work.
Okay, so, yeah, and investigate and report to council for further-
I mean, the deadlines are this long.
Sure. Sure. Yeah. Just so long as there's, yeah, just, I guess what I want to see is a path that goes from staff investigating back here.
Well, it has to before they apply anyway. It has to be, we have to pass it.
Right. So let's make sure our motion reflects that. Okay. So we are, we have a motion on the floor, which was to actually apply, you know, tell staff to apply. But there has been an amendment that is to investigate that.
To add the word investigate before apply. So we're going to investigate it.
They'll come back with a report and, I mean, we can decide at that point to apply, but we'll add the word investigate in there.
I guess I want to make sure that it doesn't say investigate and apply. It's investigate for council. Right? Yeah. There's no application until after we would say so.
Hundred percent. There may be things within the application that are just not feasible at this time for whatever reason.
We just can't let this go. That's the thing. We need to look at it quick.
Push your button, push your button.
Yeah, we need to look at this as quick as possible.
So there's a motion on the floor and now it is a motion to amend, which is investigate, report back to staff about applications.
That's four.
Not so much investigate, what applications, I guess.
Investigate, yeah. Investigate costs related to, because the application anyway would only happen after our regular council and I think will be beyond the deadline. So I think we're going to need some information about the cost of this with the intention of applying for funds because I think we should have this work done in the summer if it's possible.
So I'm pretty sure tonight we have busted our white-out budget. So the applica, the amendment is to investigate and report back to staff around, sorry, report back to council around work, necessary work at the arena and funding sources. Is that possible?
So normally we don't act on things from, sorry.
Yeah, no, I get what you're saying.
Until the council meeting, right? But we can start pulling things together.
So at our-
At our council meeting, we will hear the committee of the whole report, which will then be accepted by council, which will then direct staff to do this. But having said that, we know that they're going to start making phone calls and doing the searches now. Yes, okay.
We'll leave the word investigate because we're not going to have a motion before these deadlines.
Good. Okay.
We'll leave the word investigate. We'll take out the application. So they're going to investigate the cost of this. Sorry, Danielle, that's the amendment. Remove, apply, and add investigate.
So we have a motion to amend. We have a motion to amend, and you've basically heard that. Can we have a seconder on the motion to amend? Begging you.
He's getting candy.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second that while District One is distracted.
So the motion we're voting on now is the motion to amend our original motion, which will change the language. So any discussion on that motion? Counselor Sampson?
Okay, so we have any discussion on the motion to amend? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion, which is all about investigation? Please signify by, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion carries. So now we are back to the motion, which is now amended to say investigate. Is there any other discussion on that?
And I want to be clear, this is to do with the floor piping for the ice surface and the refrigeration units. Oh, the concrete. Oh, yeah. Yeah. All that work. Yeah.
Yes, and that was-
That part was in your original motion. All right. Any other discussion on the motion that has now been amended? None. All those in favor of the motion on the floor that has been amended? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Look at us. Okay.
Investigate.
Okay. Is there any other issue related to the multi-use facility feasibility study? Which I have really tried not to say enough.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Okay. So now I'm going to turn the meeting over to Danielle Martel, who has been filling in as clerk. So she gets to move from one chair to another. Are you okay for the clicking of slides?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, great. Okay. So for those folks following along at home, as I mentioned earlier, our package is a little out of sync. So if you are looking for information that Danielle is going to present to us tonight on her role within the municipality, so by way of that, I will say welcome to Danielle Martel, Community Development and Special Projects Officer. If you're looking for this information and you're sitting at home, it's in page 10 to 33 of your package. So I will turn it over to you, Danielle.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, committee. I am Danielle Martel, the Community Development and Special Projects Officer for the municipality. This evening, I'm going to speak to my role this past year and the initiatives that I hope to take in the coming months to year. In the interest of time, I have prepared a report that you can find in your council package that's a bit more robust, speaking to my role as it correlates to the strategic plan. So what exactly do I do? I assess community needs and explore new opportunities, collaborate with organizations on common initiatives, and develop strategies to improve communications between the municipality stakeholders and residents. I am the key facilitator for the grant fundings within the municipality, whether it's assisting community organizations explore funding opportunities or supporting organizations and applicants in getting a submission to our rightful person for assessment. A large part of my role as well is strengthening relationships with key stakeholders and collaborate with other municipalities and provide organizations to exchange information and explore potential joint ventures. To date, I have collaborated with many organizations. In the past year, I really took it to heart in trying to build relationships with community organizations, whether it was with folks in Johnstown and Locklomen to Lordways and all areas in between. My goal was really to connect with those community organizations and begin to hear from them what their successes and challenges were and how we can build stronger relationships. Over the past year, I have also supported the Volunteer Fair with St. Peters and attended the G-Mist Activate Cohort through St. FX Code Institute with a collective group of strong folks from Richmond County. Through this initiative, we learned about asset-based community development and how we can integrate it now here in Richmond County to leverage the wonderful assets we currently have residing in our community. Through this initiative, we have now developed Activate Richmond, which will be a series of events bringing together stakeholders and community organizations to help foster collaboration. Throughout this year, I have also partnered with the, with the Village of St. Peters to execute the Festival of Trees over the past two years. We raised so many donations that we were able to partner with Schools Plus, the Schools Plus through the CSAP, as well as the MiGMA Way School who ensure that our students in the areas stay warm and cozy this winter. I facilitate ongoing quarterly Richmond County Collaborative Network meetings that provide a space for service providers to come together and chat about various initiatives that they're working on and also forge collaborative opportunities. To ensure that we are supporting an age-friendly community, I sit on the Seniors Take Action Coalition and support their initiatives like their intergenerational March Break events. Oops, sorry. Through my conversations amongst community organizations, it was resounding that there is concerns and challenges as they explore funding opportunities. In my role, I then created a municipal grant database, which can be found on our municipal website, to help support these challenges that our community organizations are having. I also collaborate with them on an ongoing basis to support and explore funding opportunities, whether it is our municipal funding streams or explore provincial or federal funding opportunities or even foundational funding opportunities. Through this, I also actively share grant and funding announcements and have developed a Grant Gazette. So this is a quarterly newsletter that goes out to subscribers. Since its creation in August, we have had an uptake of over 153 individuals with an open rate of 83%. So it's not going to their spam, which is nice to hear. This Grant Gazette allows our community organizations to receive information about grants right to their inbox. I, not only am I helping to support our communities and help to leverage their opportunities, but I'm also supporting internally here at the municipal level. I collaborate on a quarterly basis with our economic development officers on joint initiatives and help to navigate where we can bolster our work that we're doing here in the area. I also have researched best practices, supports for housing development, and various funding streams to support our housing development here in Richmond County. I've attended the Connecting the Dots Poverty Event and facilitated conversations around those social determinants of health and how we can best support Richmond County around those initiatives. I am one of the municipal leads for our accessibility, which is now Idea Committee. I sit on A Man's Accessibility Community of Practice, where we share best practices around accessibility and the work that across the province we are doing to ensure that it's an equitable environment for all. I facilitated Access Awareness Week events, and I'm quite proud to say that we were the first and only municipality to host the first ever silent disco last year for Accessibility Week. This event was truly a barrier-free event where we had interpretive services, where folks could come as they were and just have an afternoon where they got to dance and listen to music. This event was streamed across the province to various other municipalities. I collaborate as well with accessible leads across Cape Breton on various joint initiatives. So as we move into creating our Ideas Plan, we are looking at collaborative initiatives around equity, diversity, and inclusion on a Cape Breton-wide initiative. I support our Recreation Department as well. So our department is Community Development and Recreation. I help support Trails funding supports. Executed last year our micro grants facilitation, support at workplace wellness events. And we've also created an interactive localized map on our municipal website. So if you have folks visiting the area, they can actually go on our municipal website and see a map of local amenities that are live currently. You can scan the QR code for folks at home. As I stated, my report is more in-depth to the work I'm doing currently as well as moving forward and how it correlates to the strategic plan that you folks have created. However, I wanted just to share a few key pieces. A large part of my role really highlights around the nature of quality of life, specifically utilizing an accessible, age-friendly approach to all services, projects, and initiatives. And 3.2, supports, builds, and enhances spaces for health and wellness. 3.3, encouraging housing development across the housing continuum. And 3.5, ensuring a welcoming experience that values equity, diversity, and inclusion. The other pillar in your strategic plan that my role really highlights and lends to is leading and engaging stakeholders. 4.2, notes, support, and connects citizens and volunteer groups. 4.3, seek and sustain collaboration with organizations in a variety of areas to pursue shared goals. 4.4, foster strong and consistent relationships with other local governments. And 4.5, find and leverage funding supports in areas including infrastructure renewal, roads, trails, sustainable housing, or sustainability, sorry, housing, accessibility, and tourism. So that is my role in a nutshell. And I hope to look forward to connecting further with our community organizations. This is my contact information. If folks wish to reach out, happy to chat. Thanks for having me.
Well, thank you. That was great. We've seen you around, certainly in the hallways, I have. And we see you here in lots of different capacities. So it's great to get a fulsome kind of view of the work that you do. I'll throw it out to counselors if they have any questions or thoughts or... Counselor Marshawn, you pushing your button there?
There you go. Thank you, Warden. Danielle, you speak of grants here. And I see you using the word micro grants. I think we spoke about before, so micro grant facilitation. And you have this, this Grant Gazette. So is that to do with like housing grants and energy grants and stuff like that? Like have you, have you kind of put contact numbers for all of these grants for seniors to apply? Is that what this Grant Gazette is about?
So in twofold. Okay, there we go. So the Grant Gazette specifically, I try to target specific grants that are coming up. So for example, our last edition highlighted more community-based grants rather than specific, say, energy or green energy initiatives. Whereas those specific grants, we actually have on our municipal database under other grants. There you will find it all categorized for like, say, infrastructure, housing, the green energy or climate, I think we call it climate and sustainability. But they are all organized within those various categories with contact information, details of the actual specific grant, the deadlines, and those do get specifically ongoing monitored by myself and Shannon, our director.
Okay. Can you speak then to these micro grant? When you say facilitation, are you helping people with these grants? Or is that grants for the municipality that we do things with?
So from my understanding, this was funding that was received to our department last year to help support active living and active living initiatives. So one of my roles last year was to help support community organizations in understanding what those- what those grants were and help them navigate that process. So whether it was, you know, an individual club looking to build community gardens or, so for one example, a community group, they've never applied for a grant before. So being that liaison between the work that we have as these micro grants and supporting the organization to get to the finish line. Another group looked at creating dartboards. Another opportunity another group did was beanbag toss. So it's creating opportunities for these community clubs and organizations to help, I mean, again, these are small pots of money, so certainly they're not going to be, you know, doing larger-scale projects, but it's to give them a little incentive to help facilitate a small active living opportunity.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much, Danielle. I were very grateful for the work you do and for your presentation tonight equally, and so we'll let you move from one chair to another.
Continue that work.
Continue that work. Yeah. And it's interesting, I was at a council meeting a while ago, I was at a council meeting a while ago, and I remember watching Shelley David, our clerk, actually sitting over there talking, talking you through the process of sitting in her chair as a part of cross-training. So it's proven to be a wise move. Sorry, Councilor Marshon, you're looking at me with a paper?
Yes, so that's the report there. That's in more robust, just in the interest of time. No, that's for light reading.
Okay, so, yeah, yeah. Thank you very much for that. So we're moving on to new business. So there is a briefing note attached for those folks following along at home, 233, for the next 10 pages or so. And the wardens, so they're clear in their direction to us, and the following page includes an email thread from the Department of Municipal Affairs to our CAO. Wonder if the CAO wants to offer any clarification on that or?
Certainly. Madam Chair, it was brought to our attention that, you know, through our planning advisory, we were trying to extend notification periods from the 14 days to 21 days here in Richmond, and then Municipal Affairs reminded us that that's not allowed according to the MGA. So we have to amend those pages and take it back to the 14 days so that we are in line with the legislation that governs us. So it was a good intent, but it can't happen. So there are a number of documents that that applies to or within our land use planning, or land use bylaws and municipal planning strategies. So the motion is in front of you to have those documents amended by EDPC and come to council to get that done.
So the recommendations on the briefing note?
I hit it, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So the recommendation on the briefing note includes the action required and a suggested motion. So happy to entertain a motion to, a motion, so that we can either make a decision or have some discussion.
I feel like this is more a formality at this point, just because of how this played out. So I'll move that the committee of the whole recommend to council to direct EDPC staff to prepare the amending pages for the land use bylaws for West Richmond, Central Richmond, Isle of Madame, St. Peters, and Richmond County, decreasing the variance appeal period from 21 days to 14 days.
That's the motion. That's the motion on the floor? Can I have a second or?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by council. We've been discussing the motion.
I guess it was a motion made to do this. If we're not allowed to do it, why do we have to rescind it? Is my thing here. Was it changed in the land use bylaws?
They're attached.
Okay, I was looking for a number 21, but he had.
Yeah, it has been changed, and it is just the formality of the process we need to follow as outlined to us by Municipal Affairs.
So we're just changing.
Yeah, yep. Okay, so any other concerns, comments, questions on that?
Yep. Comment I have, I guess, is it got changed. Why did this come back to light? Like, does Municipal Affairs kind of look at the things they have to approve it? Is it the minister?
Yes.
So it gets changed, and the minister has to approve any changes to that? Okay.
Yeah, it's a regular part of the process, that when we finish our work here at the council table, it goes up through the chain of command at Municipal Government Affairs. Yes. Yeah, and so someone in the department flagged it to staff there for them to return that to us as a concern. Okay, so any other questions on that motion? Hearing?
No, I just wanted to make a comment. It seems our municipal advisor, I read it somewhere, they're asking us to seek legal advice or we suggest that you receive it. So is that of any help? Oh, you did.
I did, received legal advice.
Oh.
To follow what was suggested by Municipal Affairs.
We wasted that money. Okay.
No, and I mean, it's good to know that we did all the things. So any other comments, concerns, debate on the motion? All those in favor of the motion on the floor, which is that committee of the whole recommend to council to direct EDPC staff to prepare the amending pages for the land use bylaws as outlined, decreasing the variance procedures from 21 days to 14. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, that motion carries. The warden's report is available for your perusal on page 244. Busy month in January. Yeah, 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 yeah. Today alone was a long day, so, but enjoying the meetings and getting to know folks immensely. Any, no concerns there? Hearing none. We have two items under Member of Council items. The first was brought to us by Councilor Mumberkett. She submitted a good amount of information for us to review prior to tonight's meeting. She, as I mentioned, could not be here this evening for this meeting, but she has met with Deputy Warden Sampson, and so Deputy Warden Sampson, on her behalf, will speak to her request for us to consider. So I'll turn it over to Deputy Warden.
So the request was to have Richmond County join the Atlantic Hydrogen Alliance as a catalyst member. It's been in the package, it's detailed in, it's far greater detail than I'll go over here, but I just want to go over a few bullet points on it. The Atlantic Hydrogen Alliance was formed to support the development of a green hydrogen economy in Atlantic Canada. So Richmond County currently, there's companies leading the way in this. Everwinds Matthew Tenary is the president, and Bearhead's Paul McClain is a director on their board. The AHA is supportive of both export and domestic use opportunities to build this sector in our region. Also, Richmond County stands to benefit directly from the success of these companies and others that will become part of the supply chain, because they're both, you know, these two companies we're referencing are, we're going to locate in Richmond County. The AHA offers a no-cost catalyst membership that demonstrates our support for the development of the hydrogen sector in Atlantic Canada. It's a membership position, it's not, we're not on the board, so there's no automatic commitment to regular meetings or anything of that sort. Our level of participation is totally at our discretion. We can support in principle, or there may be opportunities to provide support for projects, special working groups, or other activities, which we could assess on a case-by-case basis based on available time and resources. So, like, based on this, what I'd like to do is make a motion to authorize staff to pursue a catalyst membership with the AHA.
So there's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second or, which would spur some debate and question?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Councilor Marshon. So motion on the floor is that Municipal Council authorize staff to make an application for this county to become a catalyst member of the Atlantic Hydrogen Alliance. Is there any discussion on that motion? Councilor Marshon?
Yeah, some of the responsibilities, I guess, that come with that, there's no chance that they're asking for any funding, is it? Because it says that we agree to support the work of AHA by reviewing work projects, proposals, reports, giving input and feedback at our discretion, and participate on or support one of the staff committees and special working groups. So there is no financial. Okay.
Is that our discretion of repeatability and there's no cost to apply to join the efforts? Any other questions? Hearing none. I will ask all those in favor that we authorize staff to apply for this county to become a catalyst member of the Atlantic Hydrogen Alliance. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, that motion carries. So Deputy Warden Sampson has his own item under the Member of Council items, and that is regarding property assessment caps and homes destroyed by fire or other disaster. So there is a memo on that to, on page 253 of your package, and there's a link included in there, which is really interesting.
Thank you, Warden. So this one's not too long, I'll read it out just for benefit of everybody here. First, I wanted to commend the province on their recent decision to maintain the property assessment cap on those affected by the wildfires in both Tantalan and Shelburne in 2023. So second, I'd like to have council consider asking if that same idea could be extended to add those Nova Scotians who lose their homes to disaster. The initiative that was brought forward will allow residents to rebuild their homes after disaster without incurring sudden large increases in their property taxes. I feel this is only fair because those building new homes are doing it out of necessity and should not be financially punished for it. Over the last few years, we've seen several tragic events within our own county, fires as well as storms that have caused the loss of homes. So I'd like to see this extend to anyone needing to rebuild after the loss due to fire or other disaster. So as I said, I attached a link in there which had an article with a little bit of the details of it. That being said, I move that we ask the warden to draft a letter to the Provincial Department of Municipal Affairs asking for this change, and as well include our local NSFM representatives, Amanda Mumberkett and John Dunbar, to be made aware and advocate on our behalf.
Thank you for that, Deputy Warden Sampson. Do we have a second or on that motion? Seconded by Councilor Marshon. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Couldn't be retro to 2022.
Yeah, great initiative, and this certainly was brought to light after the fires, the wildfires. So great initiative, happy to support myself. So all those hearing no discussion on the matter, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor of the motion that the warden draft a letter to on this matter and include our NSFM representatives, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
If I could just thank all of council very much for supporting that. It was something that, after thinking of it for a while, became very important to me.
Yeah, and I really are thanks to you for driving that conversation, because I think it is, it is the really humane thing to do. CAO's items, so we have an Administration Operations Report, pages 254 to 260 if you're playing along. Anybody have any questions for the CAO or anything the CAO would like to highlight? No, no, if there's, if there's any.
I'll be ready for the next one. There's a lot to highlight. There is.
I have to say, I really like this operations report, and I like the action plan, because it means that items can come up without it being an agenda item under Old Business. So I really like that it, I really, well, no, no, it's perfectly fair within the policy, and I think it's a great way for us to be able to ask questions and keep these meetings in that sense, an informal, under formal. Okay, but we have, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, Madam Chair, if I may add to that, we instituted this two and a half years ago. It gives, I believe, a greater line of sight for councilors to the operations of the municipality. And as we included in the package, it's for the people at home as well to know what's going on in our county and some of the initiatives we're working on under the direction of council. So I think it just really pulls back the curtain at what we're doing and what it really takes around the municipality. So hopefully it's helped me.
Okay. Great. I think our favorite part of council, I think, is the opportunity to acknowledge those folks in Richmond County who do great work for us. And so we have a Volunteer of the Month every month, and so I'm really excited to share this one with folks. So I'll share it in the, it's a District 5 resident, and so I'll maybe throw it back over to Deputy Warden Sampson after I formally read this for the record. Charlie Martel is January 2025 Volunteer of the Month. Charlie Martel is a catalyst of change for his community. Through his generosity, leadership, and vision, he donated his time and supplies to help support a community initiative that brought together numerous volunteer efforts in Richmond County. On December 29th, 2024, a longtime Lardwa's community member lost their home to a devastating fire. Without hesitation, Charlie stepped forward, offering support to help rebuild. His efforts inspired local contractors, community members, and business owners to come together to make this new home a reality. Charlie's ability to unite others in a time of need did not go unnoticed, and he is a true community champion. Please join us in recognizing Charlie for his hard work, dedication, and commitment to this community. We thank you for all you do for Richmond County. And if you are somebody on social media and you get an opportunity to follow the story that's unfolding on Facebook, it really is something. So I'll throw it over to Deputy Warden if you have any additional thoughts.
Yeah, that's well said. No, it's been an inspiring story, I think, for everybody around. It's been a nice, sort of, good news story to get us through the winter, something that started out as a negative, turned around quite quickly, and I really want to commend Charlie on bringing people together for this, and I spoke to him for a few minutes today, actually, and he said they're anticipating that should be pretty well done, hopefully maybe late next week, which is pretty amazing considering the fire was December 29th, so.
Absolutely inspiring. So thank you for that. I wonder if they're, I'm opening it up to councilors if they have anything else they'd like to have in the record in acknowledging folks' accomplishments. Just throw that out there. Councilor Sampson?
Yeah, so thanks, Madam Ward. So again, I want to acknowledge Charlie and all the volunteers that are building that home. That's great stuff, right? So great to see. And because I was not here in January, the committee of the whole, I missed my opportunity to acknowledge our friends down Landry Lane, and they're going to think I'm late, and this is a ploy, this is a ploy for me to get them to light up the lane red for Valentine's Day in the next couple of days, but that's not what this is about. I just, I was late, that's all. But again, just wanted to acknowledge those people down that lane, like, every, every year, that, you know, for anybody that hasn't been down that lane during Christmas, it's something that you got to take in, something you got to look at, right? It's incredible. This year, their proceeds and donations went to the food bank, and they raised approximately $7,400. So just want to acknowledge all the volunteers and everybody down that lane that lights up that lane the way they do, and some community businesses. The Corner Bridge Store always comes out with some treats, and the Cred Union with some hot chocolate and some treats, and Jatis, I think this year, came out with some pizza and provided some pizza for everybody down that lane on, you know, particular nights. So just wanted to acknowledge everybody in that situation, and just great stuff. And again, for the food bank donation, that's going to a great cause, so, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, when we did the nomination for the Community Spirit Award through the left-hand governor's office, it was actually kind of one of the stories we told, and I forget the dollar amount, but it really is a staggering amount of money that they have raised for community groups. And what started out as a competition between an uncle and a nephew over who had the best Christmas lights has exploded into what looks like an airport runway as you come around the corner. So shout out to those folks. Okay, thank you. So, and again, as always, thank you to all the volunteers who do the important work that make living here so worthwhile. So we have a number of correspondence, and of those, several require action on our part. And so we'll move along to that. So starting on page 262 of your packages, if you are following the online version, we have a note from, correspondence from Kathleen Jeffrey, who is the interim director of the community. have a note from, correspondence from Kathleen Jeffrey, who is the Interim Director of Finance, regarding a grant application from the Acadia Ville Community Centre for Startup Activity Grant Funds in the amount of $500. Now, I am the councillor for District Two. So I know, I can usually look over to Amanda Mumberkett, Councillor Mumberkett, who will sort of act on my behalf. But I, on this one, I have a bit of a concern, but I'm mindful that tonight is the Committee of the Whole, so I'm kind of looking for some advice from council. Tonight is the Committee of the Whole, and so what decisions we would make here would actually go to council for ratification, for the, the actual act of doing. So I, what typically happens is here at Committee of the Whole, there would be a decision made and a motion. I have a concern about this application in that it describes itself as a startup activity, but on the one hand, it's not startup, because they have the breakfast every morning, like regularly. And on the other hand, it, a startup to me is something that would allow you to do it year after year after year. So when we funded the startup for the Christmas event, it was intended to provide them with money to get the activity going, so that then they could actually get it off the ground the following year without the additional expense. So if you buy a, a tree skirt and, and all of those things. This, I'm not sure that it actually is a startup activity, because I don't know how doing it one year financially makes it feasible for you to be able to do it the year after that. But it's an important project. And so I'm wondering if it is possible for me to defer this to the meeting next, our council meeting two weeks from now, as I believe we did with Councillor Mershon around the church, to give me the opportunity to, if necessary, revisit that application, which does not delay anything, because nothing can happen until that meeting anyway. So is that, is that something that there is an appetite for? And I'm wondering, do we need a motion to bring this to council at that point?
Yeah, you still need a motion for it to get to council.
Right. So can I have, somebody give me a hand here, to make a motion to defer this item to the council meeting, to give me a chance to kind of clarify this? Because it may be that it's a simple change from startup to sponsorship. There, there is another avenue.
Councillor Mershon?
Oh. No, I gotta, I'll make, yeah, I'll make a motion to defer this to...
Okay, yeah, make the motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to defer this to the council.
Okay. Great. Did, do we have a second?
Sure. I think we have, have to have a second, and then we can have conversation.
I'll second that motion.
Go ahead, Councillor Mershon.
Look, I, I don't see the issue. I mean, yes, they have put it under startup, but they have applied under type two grants. I mean, it's just, it is a type two, which is an activity grant. They're doing an activity, and this is the issue. We waste so much time on these grants, and here we are again. They've applied under type two. Type two's an activity grant. You get 50% of the cost net of the HST. I mean, startup is there, so is there a bunch on type two? Like, I see section B here is, is there more than...
They, yeah, they've already done, yep, yep. Sure, they've already done one, and they're allowed to have two under this category. But I, I do think we have clearly acknowledged that there are problems with our grant policy, and that is why we have spent almost all of February 3rd and tonight working on revisions of that, but we are bound by the policy in front of us. And to be clear, I'm not suggesting any delay, because even if we made a motion to give money tonight, it had to be, it would have to be approved two weeks from now at the council meeting. So there is absolutely no delay in terms of approval for the group. So, and I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be open to that, I wouldn't want to delay it any more than that.
Is it our current policy or the new one that we're writing up that they need to come to Committee of the Whole? I remember that somewheres.
I, it doesn't matter to me, like, they are here at Committee of the Whole, and so I would like to make sure that it is, I am able to bring it up at the council meeting, so there's no problem with that, because I don't want to see it, have to say, oh, well...
I don't have an issue with it.
Yep.
I know I remembered that.
I remember that. We spoke of it only coming to Committee of the Whole, so I don't want this to be delayed to March, Committee of the Whole.
No, 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 that's what, 100%.
Yeah.
Yep, fine. 100%, I am not asking it to go to March. I am, I'm specifically asking for this motion so that it comes to council where it would have to go anyway. Okay? Any other discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion carries. So we'll move, yeah, okay, so we'll move on to the next one, which is Coastal Riders ATV Type Four. And, and there are several coast, there are several ATV groups. I believe this is the one, am I right, that is in District Five? Yeah. And, and I do want councillors to know that I've had conversations with Councillor Mumberkett about her, her ability to contribute to, to whatever. So this application is 275 to 286, so if you have something to, oh, sorry, right. So they are requesting type four regional health general grant funds in the amount of $3,050, and that is the exact amount on the quote.
Minus HST, you're like...
Minus HST, are they eligible to?
I'm not sure what they, what they're asking for is the amount before HST.
Before HST, okay. Is, would this be eligible for the GST holiday? Is this, no, this wouldn't fall into that category.
Doesn't speak of HST in type four. It says max $10,000 per application.
It may very well be that they have a, a funding source to be able to return that money. So for whatever reason, they've made the request to $3,050.
So I'd move that we support this. Now, I'm also willing to, within that, I'd like to support it to the 3,050, 500 coming from the District Five Fund. And I'd like to know if you were copied of that, was it 500 or, okay, I'm trying to find the email here, but I know Councillor Mumberkett sent me something this afternoon.
I thought she said she had no district funds.
She thought she didn't, but...
Oh, did she say something?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I know I sent...
Yep, the, I got it.
Okay, yeah, okay. She did send me something this afternoon, a little after 2:00. She would be willing to support the Coastal Riders ATV request with 500 from the District Four Fund. So that would bring it up to 1,000, so it would be 2,050 coming out of the regional funds, which would be my motion. 500 from District Four.
500 from District Five, I think, or...
Yes, and, and to be clear, Councillor Mershon's, Councillor Mumberkett's emails to me would have been before that. So there's a motion on the floor, 5,000, sorry, 500 from District Four, 500 from District Five, with the balance of 2,050 coming from regional funds. That's the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Councillor Sampson.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next is the interim Director of Finance Kathleen Jeffrey regarding the Isle Madame Boat Club for Type Four Regional Health Grant Funds in the amount of $20,000. That is page 287 to 300. And throw that out for discussion, or...
Yeah, for me, Madam Warden, yeah, when you're looking at their ask of 20,000, it's very similar to Lewisdale Lions Club and the waterfront project there, and they're asking for 20,000 to leverage 1.2 million, so. And the boat club and Community Economic Development Fund and Community Facility Improvement Fund and ACOA are all getting on board, and they need the five streams of funding to get the rest of this funding. So I'm, I'm willing, I think, looking at, you know, our strategic plan and, and the waterfront development allocation funding that we put aside every year, I think there is $10,000 left in that fund. And so I don't know if this is a time-sensitive issue to where we can maybe, you know, look, look at carrying this over to our next fiscal year, 10 here and 10 next fiscal. So I don't, I'm not sure if you were talking to them, Madam Warden, if this is time-sensitive or not.
You didn't make a motion, did you? Okay, okay. So, yeah, I, I have been in conversations with the boat club and connected them with, with our development officer, and I believe they are cognizant of the fact that they were coming up against the fiscal, end of fiscal year, and that they are mindful of the fact that it is the end of the year. I, I think the sooner the better, but they are, they are mindful of the fact that, you know, they've applied late in the fiscal. So I, I think they would be, I, I think the reality is, in our, so there are funds set aside for waterfront development, which seems to me to be a perfect place for this, but there is only $10,000 in that budget. So the opportunity to be considered for $10,000, you know, to push the second $10,000 to the next fiscal year, I think they, whether they are okay with that or not, the reality is that that's where we are.
You have a motion seconded.
So do we want to have a motion so that we can therefore continue this conversation?
So Deputy, or so, Councillor Sampson?
Yeah, so I will make that motion that we fund the $10,000 out of the waterfront development fund, the 10,000 remaining in our fiscal 2024, 2025, and also add the $10,000 to fill in the...
To add, or would we just defer to budget deliberations?
Defer, defer $10,000.
Seen in previous end of fiscal.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, okay, so defer $10,000 to our 2025, 2026 budget deliberations. Thank you.
So the motion on the floor is to provide $10,000, the remaining $10,000 from the waterfront development fund, and to refer the additional $10,000 to complete this ask to budget deliberations? Is that...
Madam Chair, I think for cleanliness of this, it's to approve the 20,000 with 10,000 to be paid out of this year's fiscal and 10,000 to be paid out of the 25, 26 budget, which, if you make the decision today, it goes into our budget deliberations already decided and allocated, so that it, you're committed to those. And that's how that's been done in the past.
So the, yeah, so, so this, so are we confident that we have this money next year? Like...
Yeah, just so I'm clear, if, what you're meaning by that, CAO, so that the remain, like, you know, the first 10 now, the second 10 would automatically go in, and whether, come budget time, regardless of how much we decide to fund that next year, it will be funded at a minimum of 10.
That's right.
Yeah.
That 10,000's already spoken for.
Okay, yeah, we could decide to not fund it anymore, we could decide to fund it as we normally have, which I suspect is probably the case, but it would be that we're deciding right now.
2,000 normally, the next year is 2,900, because 10's already called for.
Yeah, okay.
So I apologize, I led you astray there, Councillor Sampson. So we don't have a second yet, so we'll go back to what you had intended to say. So you had talked about fund $10,000 from the waterfront development fund in this fiscal year, and 20,000, sorry, the rest of the 20, so 10, to come out of next year's fiscal. Okay? So that's the motion on the floor. Do we have a second so that we can continue discussion?
Seconded by...
Seconded by Councillor Mershon. So now we have some conversation, and I'll turn it over to the CAO.
Madam Chair, if I may ask, is this intended to come out of our CCBF waterfront money? Because if so, contingent to that motion, it has to be CCBF eligible and meet that criteria, right? Okay. Just so long as we're clear.
Yeah, and, and I believe that that was the conversations I had with them, they were, they were aware of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of tentacles to that.
Councillor Mershon, do you...
Yeah. So as with your grant, like, they applied under grant type four for that CCBF, is there a different application process for that?
The waterfront development?
Yeah.
The CCBF... The CCBF is where that money is coming from, but it's, the grant type he's referring to was under the waterfront development fund that we allocate every year. It, it's kind of a separate one, but, yeah, it, just this application fits that perfectly.
But there's no actual application form?
That they, they filled out the right form, is my understanding, and we can allocate it from the fund. So, Councillor, CAO, is that...
I don't get the impression that that's the right form, but I don't know if there's a different form. If this is grant type four...
No, in this case, there isn't.
They could just send a regular letter asking for money out of the... Yeah, that's okay. I mean, it's, it's okay, it's not, it's not really done on the right form, just like yours wasn't. I would have allowed...
I, I don't think they actually have a different form, and this application form is the application for, the application they also submitted to ACOA and, and to other agencies. So it's not like they went to, you know, created all this work for this one. Okay, so there is a motion on the floor, and, and I'll review that because I caused some confusion, to fund $10,000 from the waterfront development fund and to refer the second $10,000 to the next fiscal. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? That motion carries. Okay, so we have, we get correspondence every once in a while, this one just sort of, I, I thought I'd include it tonight in a timely way around Canadian Union of Postal Workers' request for municipality to provide written submission to the Industry, Industrial Inquiry Commission. So don't know if you've had a chance to review it, if we can say it's been brought forward to council, and if anybody has any actionable items on that, let me know.
I think they're asking for the municipality. Says that we have a critical decision, door-to-door delivery, is that what, do they want a letter of support for this, or... Says, "We find ourselves in a period of federal political uncertainty, possibility of a federal election months away. This will raise the public discussion and debates on many issues affecting the public and municipalities." So I get that they want a letter of support for this by...
Yeah, and...
...to speak to this lady.
Yeah, you know, there, "We urge you to question the political parties on their intentions for Canada Post and insist they make clear their public commitments regarding the following issues." And the reason why I just thought it was timely to, to revisit here is just there have been some, some significant issues raised around Canada Post, particularly in District Five. So, you know, throwing that out in terms of, "We urge you to question the political parties," which could be any form we want. It could be a letter, it could be whatever, but it would be up to council to determine if there's an application to do that, and it just speaks to the concerns that we have heard at this council table in the past.
Because I thought I read something in there about these community mailboxes and having local delivery. There's some areas that have the community mailboxes, and are they saying you could go back to local, or is there areas in District Five where it's local mailbox at the door that they want to put that into a community mailbox?
Now, the issues we had was about service delivery and just having days and sometimes weeks without anybody delivering the mail and people not being notified, and so the, the problems weren't that.
Right, and, you know, they're, they're looking for, you know, a resolution, and they, they attach one as a possibility, you know, that, that we would write the Federal Minister of Labor to demand no changes be made to Canada Post mandate, or so on. So, you know, if those are the wishes of council, we can certainly get involved with that. Just want to make sure that we have, you know, considered their request, given that we do have some identified issues with Canada Post. But I'm not seeing any motions to move forward on that, which is, which is fine. Okay, moving on.
Well, I guess I just want to ask, like, you, you put... I guess I just want to ask, like, you, you put this on the agenda, so did you, were you expecting a motion for direction?
I was not, no. I, I feel that Canada Post has been a, an agenda item in the past. Just didn't want to be the one to put this in the circular file without making sure council saw it, and this is the best way to do that. So, yeah, no, not looking for anything, just wanting to be, um, very clear. Okay, so, um, there are several for information items only, uh, but we're going to go through those quite quickly. So, um, these are, um, busy volunteers who found out about funding opportunities and asked for letters from, uh, council in support of, uh, their applications. And in some instances, we actually had already provided funds. So the first was to the Almedam Historical Society, a letter of support, uh, for their application to the facility improvement grant. Um, there is something in there regarding the, um, so item two is Federation of Municipalities' press release emphasizing collaborations with the province on U.S. tariffs. So, um, as I'm sure your inboxes have reflected, there have been several, um, emails from the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities, and there have also been some from the Canadian municipality, uh, Federation of Municipalities to sort of recognize that there is an effort to speak with one voice on this, um, uh, on this matter, so. Um, and I'll just go through them, and if you have any questions. A letter of support to the East Richmond ATV riders regarding their letter of authority. Um, and, and that one was, uh, the motion was to reaffirm, so, uh, that letter included the attachment of the twenty twenty-one letter. Um, MOCR letter regarding caregivers of those with disabilities being included as first voice. Uh, I do want to say that, uh, the municipal, uh, Department of Municipal Affairs has, uh, luncheon learns every month, and this month's luncheon learn was on the idea legislation, so, um, uh, the anti-racism and the Accessibility Act, uh, legislation, and what that means. So, um, it, these are a small number of people on these calls. They're very informal, but they're, they're great. And so I brought this matter up, uh, and there was somebody from the Accessibility Directorate there, uh, and I, and she, they really hadn't thought of it, and I mentioned that we had sent that letter, and she was actually very grateful that we sent it, because she said that is the best way for us to get information to them around changes to legislation. So there are changes that will be made to legislation on a regular basis, so she wanted to pass along her thanks for, for putting it in that format. Uh, West Richmond, uh, Richmond Warriors Boxing Club, uh, we had already given them money, so that reflects that. And a letter of support regarding the Cape Breton South, uh, application for the Office of Healthcare Professional Recruitment's Community Fund. Anybody have any questions?
Councillor Marchon?
This is a fund that's already there, that they're just applying for money out of.
Which one, I'm sorry?
For the last one. This is the, uh, South Recruiting, Cape Breton South.
Yeah, so the application is for work that they want to do, but one of the things they had to include was a letter showing that work they, that group had previously done had been well received. And so that, oh, sorry, that, uh, group has already produced a booklet, um, a career catalog, catalog. It really is quite good. Uh, and so they, they needed a letter to say that previous work had been well received.
Happy to put my guidance councillor spin on that one, too, so. Uh, unfinished business. So this is an item that carried over from council meeting a few weeks ago. Can I ask councillor Marchon to get us up to speed on this one?
Yeah, so they had initially applied, uh, under the infrastructure, but since they didn't own it, I had asked to, uh, delay it for a bit, and I spoke to them, and they reapplied under, uh, the type four general, uh, for that five thousand dollar amount. Uh, so the, I think the application, the new application was emailed to everyone?
Yes.
Because what's in the package is the old one. So, I'll, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve this, but since there's probably only ten thousand left in the type four, I can take, uh, and I don't mind taking two thousand dollars out of the district funds for District Three, uh, and then take three thousand of the general, just in case there's, out of the, I guess, the thirty-seven thousand, just in case there's other applications that come forward. So I'll make a motion that we take two thousand out of the District Three Funds, and three thousand out of, I guess, the thirty-seven thousand, or whatever you call them, the general fund.
So the application is being resubmitted under type four regional, and so the motion from councillor Marchon is to take two thousand dollars out of District Three Funds with the remaining three thousand dollars coming out of, uh, the regional funds. So that's the motion on the floor.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a seconder. Do we have any discussion on that motion?
The only thing I, I want to say is that we should keep an eye, because the sheet that we got today, there's, it would be less than, uh, I guess, ten to be, with this three, there'd be, you know, seven, eight thousand left in the general fund, so we should keep an eye on that.
So it was on thirteen, or I was on it, and one was target.
Yeah, and we, we took two thousand fifty from it, and now three thousand, so be down to eight, nine, you know. So just, you know, keep everybody up to speed on that. Thank you, Warden.
And we highlight it in red for the next meeting.
And, and I have a concern just that, we are revisiting our grants policy. And so in our upcoming grants policy that will, we are hoping to get through, so that it is in place for the.
Next fiscal.
Next fiscal year, April first and beyond. But we are bound by the kind of policy and practices and the, uh, exceptions we have made to policy and the decisions we've made around policy regardless. And I feel like decisions around church and church properties have come exclusively out of district funds. So I, I will not be able to support that motion, because I feel like, even though I wasn't part of council, it's not consistent with previous decisions, acknowledging that we are making changes forward, but we're in this fiscal year abiding by this policy. So I'm fine with the two thousand, but not the additional three. So, so that's how I'll be voting.
On the motion, I would vote no, but I am open to an amendment. So councillor Sampson? Uh, just councillor Sampson, I think, his letter's on the floor.
Yeah, so that's exactly the direction I was going to take, Madam Warden. And again, going forward, uh, with our new grants policy and, and, you know, some amendments we're going to make to those policies, I have no problems with that. Uh, but, uh, in the past, uh, it, you know, it, it's been the norm that, uh, we would just simply go, uh, district funds and, uh, invest our district funds into our local churches and not into our regional funds. So I will be voting that way as well. Thank you.
Councillor Marchon?
The thing with this grant application, they're not applying under infrastructure like some of those others. Uh, whether it's a church or not, they don't have to show ownership here. So, you know, to say you're not supporting it because of it being a church, I made them apply a different way. Uh, I realize we, we haven't been following the policy anyway all along, to, so to kind of make the statement now, because it is a church, I mean, they applied under how I think. There's no restrictions of ownership. Uh, so that's why I made them apply this way. I didn't realize that the same was going to be, you know, uh, they were going to be treated in the way how other churches were treated, I guess.
Councillor, or deputy Warden Sampson?
Yeah, and I can understand both sides of this. I think it, um, it's up to you, councillor Marchon, if it may be a time to consider if you want to make an amendment to that or not. But, yeah.
It's not going to pass, I guess.
I guess if it's not going to pass, I may as well make an amendment. But again, we violated this policy so many other ways. I thought going to type four was definitely, ownership is not there anymore. You know, they don't have to show that they own it. Uh, we're giving money to organizations, they don't show ownership. They don't have registry joint stocks. We got an income statement from a legion that showed that they had all kinds of money. If, if the policy that says you fund on need, we violated that. So I didn't look at this as how other ones came in. You know, we funded a roof that was clearly infrastructure under a general, you know. So, uh, if it's not going to pass, if it doesn't pass, I will make the amendment, I'll, I'll make a new motion to do it under, or can I?
Well, I think you could make an amendment to the motion.
We would vote on the amendment and then vote on the motion, because it, it's on the floor. We would have to vote on it and vote it down. There's no way to withdraw it.
No, not to withdraw.
Right.
It didn't pass, but I guess it's, you can't make another motion on the same thing.
So I think an amendment is the.
It would be the same motion if you change.
Right, so I, I think an amendment is, is the best course of action.
I do too.
Just the way we did around the arena.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking, because I could make it.
Take a moment, yeah, take your time.
Yeah, I, I think you could make a motion, because the motion would be different, it would be identical.
It would be the same. But, uh, just in case, uh, what I'll do, I'll make an amendment that, um, we take the two thousand from the district fund, uh, for this. And I'll renege the three thousand out of the type four.
Okay, so the amendment is two thousand from district funds and nothing from regional. Can I have a seconder to amend as such?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by councillor Sampson. Is there any discussion on that motion? I will just say that there is a difference between violating policy and exceptions to policy. And I think there have been exceptions to policy, and those exceptions to policy should be consistent. So that's just my take on, on wording. You can argue semantics, but that's, that's how I'm, that's how I'm voting on this.
District funds don't, district funds don't follow any different rules than the general. So giving district, district funds for someone that doesn't own is no different than giving. It's, it's money. The district funds follow the same rules that are here. There's nothing here that states that the district funds, you can just do whatever you want with them. So, you know, it's not violating, it's not, you know, not following rules. Whether you're violating or making an, an exception, you're violating it. If we're going to make changes or exceptions, we need, and it's, I think it was stated there, that you have to amend that, that policy, the grant policy, and we are doing that now. But the amendment is on the floor.
So there's a motion to amend, and that motion to amend changes the motion so that it is two thousand dollars exclusively from district funds. Any other discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Is there any additional discussion on the two thousand dollars from district fund? Hearing none, I'll put that motion now, which is amended, to be the two thousand dollars to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And so, uh, review of checks, those are listed, and, um, right after that, our review of action items. Um, so we have no additional items added to the agenda, so are there any comments, concerns, questions on items twelve or, or, sorry, whatever those are? Uh, review of checks and review of action items. Any concerns, questions there? Hearing none. Um, there is a.
Call.
Sorry?
The question period.
Yeah, yeah, so now I'm, we're on, um, question period, sorry. Um, so we now have a fifteen-minute question period, so we have some members in the gallery, um, and we'll take questions from the gallery, but we will also, uh, call for anyone who would like to phone in, two two six nine eight eight five. Uh, and there is a bit of a delay, so if there's anybody in the gallery who has any questions, now is a good time, because it takes several minutes for that to come through. So if there are any questions? Live, live. Yeah, I was surprised, though. No, this one's live also.
No, but there's, there's a bit of a delay, we figured out.
Yeah, yeah, but even since, yeah.
That's the last one, I'm waiting.
Okay, so I think now that we have, we have heard no ringing of telephones, um, we have an item, uh, under contract negotiations, so that requires us to go in camera. So I'll entertain a motion to go in camera. Moved by deputy Warden Sampson. Can I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Sampson. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Um, so we'll go directly to the Richmond room, and then we will adjourn there. Jake, I'm going into that meeting. Do you, do you want to wait for me? It, it shouldn't be long, or?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I'll come right out here. I won't even pack up.
Yeah, Brent, you.
And actually, then Brent can come first.